The Kitsap Senate editorial board talking with the candidates for Port Orchard City Council number five. And Cindy will let you begin, you'll take three minutes. Jim Campbell is the timekeeper. He'll wave at you when we stop and Amy Miller will let you have a chance to.
Okay. I'm going to read something that I prepared for this three minutes so I can make the best use of the time. "I come better equipped to run for city council than ever with a track record of city involvement, with having regularly attended council meetings for the past five years, and with currently serving on the Port Orchard Economic Development and Tourism Committee, I've stayed attuned to city and citizen concerns through continued hands-on involvement. In 2009, after a recount, I fell just 12 votes short in winning city council position number two, and in 2007, running for position number four, I ran, I was 12th, 12 votes short. I have invested my own resources and time in both of the elections and continually throughout. My position as Executive Director of Cedar Cove Association only emphasizes my commitment to benefit our community and to demonstrate my vision for Port Orchard's potential as a tourism destination through putting on events like Cedar Cove Days, which brought thousands of people from 42 states and eight foreign countries to Port Orchard. In the end, we contributed to over 20 nonprofit organizations, as well as bringing economic vitality to our region. This all done without raising our taxes. Plans are also in place for adding another movie premiere, not unlike the past two years, which included Debbie Maycomb versus Mrs. Miracle and Call Me Mrs. Miracle, allowing families to attend free movies during tough economic times. My background includes over 25 years of independent business ownership of an advertising agency and a flower shop specializing in events. That experience was a perfect teacher of conservative fiscal responsibility as I balanced two businesses in my family. I have one daughter who was born blind and who helped me to see the world in a totally different way. When she was young, I helped to fund a support group for parents of special needs children in Madison, Wisconsin, which is the beginning of a lifetime of my advocating and volunteering on behalf of families. My gifted daughter went on to graduate early from high school and to graduate from the University of Puget Sound to come to Washington. She works and lives independently and is the definition of tenacity. My free time is spent with my family and friends. I love mountain hiking, working on projects on my house and yard, and visiting the gorgeous natural beauty of the area we call home. My husband and I love Port Orchard and try to support local businesses at every opportunity. I look forward to serving the citizens of Port Orchard for the next four years with conservative fiscal management and a strong commitment to a city plan that includes the likes of pedestrian bicycle pathways and community spaces that will allow future generations a better place to live and raise our families."
Actually, you had 15 seconds under, so you get an extra second. My name's Amy Miller, and I'm running for Port Orchard to be a voice for families. Just a little bit about me, my background. I'm a lifelong Washington resident. I grew up in the Auburn area. My husband and I have been married for 14 years, and we've been in Port Orchard raising our two little girls for the past five. I attended Washington State University, where I got my degree in animal science and agricultural economics. After college, I went to work in the pet supply industry, where I worked as a sales rep for nine years, traveling around Washington, calling on small businesses, including those in Kitsap County and Port Orchard. After college, I, after my pet industry career, I decided to go and take the opportunity to stay home with my kids, and I've been doing that for the past five years, and I'm blessed to have that opportunity. In doing that, I've been able to get more involved in the community. I have a little bit more time. I've been active in the local Moms Club, which is a Moms Offering Moms Support. I organized the Daddy Daughter Dance in 2010. That dance is a really neat event that allows over 400 dads and daughters to come out for the night and just have a really good time. And we were fortunate to bring in over $2,500 just that one year for local charities. I'm also an advocate for parks and public spaces. I'm really passionate about that. I think it's important for all families to have places to go and be outside and get exercise. I had a big part in the new design of the play structure at Dwight Street Clayton Park in Port Orchard. I also served on lots of the planning events that went on for the South Kitsap Regional Park and all that's going on there, including the new play structure that went in. I'm part of the McCormick Village Park Planning Subcommittee and also the Port Orchard Parks Subcommittee. So going to all these interest groups and council meetings, something became very clear to me in that there was something missing on the council, and what that was, was an actual consistent voice for families. And I think I can be that voice. I'm connected to how families act in the town. I know what things they're looking for. I know what's missing in the town and what they would like to see, and I think I can be that voice.
Thanks. We'll let Amy start with the first question. This is something we ask the other candidates. One of the things we hear a lot about for Portland businesses coming in and out of downtown Port Orchard is there have been things like a parking garage, changes to the waterfront park, changes to the port property, future of the library. I'm curious what your vision is for downtown Port Orchard, what you think the city should take its time pursuing, what projects make the most sense to you, and what you would make the priority if you were on the council?
I think that the downtown revitalization plays a huge part on what's going to happen to the future of Port Orchard, and there definitely should be a few top priorities. I think a gathering place downtown should be one of those. I think somewhere for families to go. Prime spot for that would be to expand what's already there with the Marina Waterfront Park. My kids call it the Spinney Park. I know that's a Port of Bremerton property, so we would need to kind of couple up with them and figure out how to use resources and the land that's there. If we could somehow do something with the parking that's taking up the prime real estate there and move it, I'm not exactly sure about the past plans for the parking garage, if that would be the key or not. I'm not sure if it's needed right now, but definitely a gathering place that could be somewhere for families to get together, and we could certainly utilize that for all the different community festivals that we have. The library needs reworking. I think it should be a lot bigger space. I know they're bursting at the seams. The city's providing a new roof for that building, but it's still much too small. That should be a priority if we could do something to help out in that respect. The library is a great resource for families and people of all ages, really. So those would probably be my top two things. And then anything to help bring in new businesses, and I think part of doing that, we could help with continuing the projects to underground utilities in the space there, show that we're, that Port Orchard's investing in infrastructure and that we're going to make it as easy as possible for new businesses coming in and help them through the permitting process and that type of thing.
The priorities that I feel right now are different than what I felt two years ago, mainly because of the economic decline. We have a very limited budget, and as much as we would like to do all this work on the waterfront and to have a new library and to new parking garage, resources are so limited that we're going to have to be practical about the priorities. Some of them right now are the infrastructure that's being talked about. We've just annexed during the process of annexing, completing the annexation of the Bethel Corridor. There's going to be a tremendous amount of work that's needed to be done on the Bethel Corridor, and still in the downtown area where we're replacing the sewer and water mains that have been, that need work from many years ago. We had a shortfall of $260,000 with the water utility this past year, and that has to be reconciled and worked on. There's lots of capital funding that's needed to be worked on with the water utilities right now, so a lot of the monies are going to have to be spent on these utilities. We talked about a downtown project, and in fact, when we had Cedar Cove Days, part of what we were trying to do is to bring economic development into the community. It was successful. We had $35,000 in loan and sales tax that was collected during that event. We have another event planned for 2013 where we're going to be bringing in another group of people. The reason that we're focusing on this kind of economic development for the time is that it's practical, can be done. Tourism right now is something that does pay. The business, the business structures downtown are mainly owned by several landlords that don't live here and don't care very much about what happens to Port Orchard. There's going to be quite a process of getting them to relinquish these properties or to improve on them. And what's being talked about right now is working towards that end, working with some of these landowners to actually move forward with revitalization. Parking has been an issue. We've talked about it quite a bit, but the parking garage on Prospect Street that was proposed ended up having a $56,000 per stall cost and isn't practical. So there is a project that could be considered, and that would be having a parking garage off of Klein, where we could actually incorporate the county, the city, Kitsap Transit, and the Port of Bremerton in going together to put up a more modest garage that wouldn't take the funding that an undergrounding garage would that we originally talked about in the Prospect area. And the Prospect piece of property that's been worked on, and we have some property acquisition already lined up there, could be used for the community center that we've been talking about, which would be a new library in the future. So I think we move forward with a city plan that incorporates all of these kinds of things, the new library, improving the waterfront. Tremont Corridor is going to need a tremendous amount of work. The Bethel Corridor, all of those things are priorities. Taking one step at a time is servicing the needs of the city as it exists now, and that would be with the infrastructure and the paving. McCormick Woods is going to be needing more police coverage. That's all part of what we need to move forward on before we can actually realistically invest in some of these other projects. So it's a lot on the plate. I would say the Tremont Corridor right now with the widening project and the infrastructure work is probably the top priority. The library, the whole idea with adding the roof is to utilize that structure for the next couple of years until the economy improves and we can move forward with something like a new library downtown.
You mentioned working with the landowners on improving their property.
Yes.
How do you see that? Explain what the thought is there, what the city council could do.
Right. We have, for Cedar Cove Days, we actually contacted a landowner, and that would be Samad Pore, and talked to him about utilizing the structures for a welcome center. Delilah has also worked with Samad Pore in utilizing the pavilion building, and part of what we would like to do with the downtown is to work with some of these landowners to move forward with some of their buildings, whether that be in selling or working on partnerships with businesses or improvements, that kind of thing. And, you know, we feel we've already got to start with that, and improving the business climate downtown would help to catalyze the process. Part of what I'm looking forward to with economic development, and why I've been sitting on that committee, is to go out and look for businesses to come in rather than to wait for them to come here first. Just as an example of something that we're working on currently is Debbie Maycomb, whom you know of as an author, is, has, has a contract coming with Hallmark to have a new TV series. That TV series is about Cedar Cove, which is Port Orchard, and I don't know, we're looking to have that series possibly found in Port Orchard. It would be a tremendous boon to our economy if we could have something like that happen. Right now, most of those contracts are going to Canadian producers, and we're looking, we actually have a meeting tomorrow, to try to work out some kind of deal where we can entice the producers to come here. Some of this is off the record.
Little life goes on.
I know, I know. But what we are, what we are hoping for, no matter what, the television series will be about Port Orchard. And I'm sure you're aware of the Twilight series and what it did for Forks and how many people came to Forks after that, even though just small portions of that were actually found there. Well, that's the kind of thing we're working on through Cedar Cove Association as economic vitality, to bring in this kind of thing and attention to Port Orchard that completely changes everything. When you have that kind of thing going on, there's an energy and excitement that will happen. People will start coming, and we feel that that's the kind of thing that will help these business owners and landowners to look at the future and move forward.
Amy, I'm going to ask you a kind of a similar question. You're running on a platform of consistent voice for families. Would you say, well, how does that, as you're, either call it your platform or your background, how does that lead you into economic development issues? How do you, how do you reflect that upon what the council's job actually is?
Right, I understand what you're saying. The role I see that being a voice for families is providing for our residents first, making sure that they have what they need as far as choices for business, recreation, entertainment, provide for them first so they're not having to leave town to find those things. They're not having to leave town to find just events to do with their family. I think tourism is wonderful, but I want to focus on the everyday user of Port Orchard, not the once a year user. I think that there's a lot of things that can be improved upon. As far as downtown, I think if we can encourage the business owners to invest in themselves, similar to what Rudy did with his Rings and Things store. His new store is really great, and he took it upon himself to really take a leap of faith with the city and kind of reinvent himself there. And when he did that, he's become a role model for the rest of the town in my eyes, just saying that, you know, I'm going to go ahead and do this, and I bet good things will come from it. So the existing business owners, if they could do that, and I think the city would certainly partner up with them and make the process as easy as possible. As far as getting permits, they understand how it works now with dealing with the marquee and some of the aging infrastructure that's down there. They have to deal with that as they go, but if the businesses can also take it upon themselves to help out too, that would be great. I know they do as much as they can with organizing with the Port Orchard Basterdy Association and the Chamber, and they've put together a lot of really neat programs, but they can encourage individual investment too. I think the public will respond and really support our local businesses.
You've both been involved in some things outside the council, but obviously this will be a new, either way, it's a new person to join the council. Give me an example of one thing that the council has done that you've agreed, you said I would have voted for this, I would have been a part of that issue, and give me one thing that over the past two years the council's done that you said I would have disagreed, I would have stood up against this one. And I was going to ask Cindy.
The thing I would have agreed with. The council, let me just think for a second about, the council recently, as far as disagreeing, there was an issue that came forward with the classification of the city, the code versus the second class. That turned into quite a controversial situation. When I was sitting in at a goal planning meeting at the beginning of the year, discussion was brought forward about changing the code status. That possibility is something that's been on the books for quite a long time. I think it was 1967 where cities were allowed to change their code status, and it's more of a housekeeping modernization kind of thing that was taking place. It seems to have been, it seems to have been blown out of proportion, and I do believe in good faith that the council was moving forward with more of a housekeeping measure and making that code classification change. I felt really sad that they had to pull that, that measure, that proposal to make Port Orchard a code city from the second class, and I understand that their motivation for it was to not put that on the election, have a special election which would have cost so much money. But I, I think what I was feeling most of the time is that the council was doing its job and was not trying to hide anything. So I, I felt badly that they had to take that back and that sitting on the shelf once I feel that in the last two years, they made a huge mistake with some of the work that they did with the Tremont Corridor. That actually goes back even a little further than that, but it's been a process of the widening with the end project being a very large roundabout at the Tremont-Pontery intersection. That project is costing a tremendous amount of money, and the original intent of that was that to manage the traffic coming off of Highway 16 and making that a better access straight through. As it is now, it will cost so much more than they originally intended, which could have been handled with just a simple widening of the additional lanes and adding synchronized lights. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to see the funding come through that's going to be necessary for the completion of that project, and it's held up any kind of work on that, on that corridor until more recently. Property acquisition is nearly complete on that, and I still would like as a council for them to go back and revisit what it would take to widen the corridor without the expense of the large roundabout. There's going to have to actually be more than one. And management of the traffic with just the streetlights. So that's something that I disagree with the council and how they handle that moving forward.
An example of something that you said the council do that you said this is something I would have wanted to give?
Right. There's quite a few things. Just trying to think of something large enough. I agreed with the council when they decided to improve the library downtown. There was talk, the library district is separate from the city, and there was an initiative that was going forward for the city to become part of that library district. In the end, we did become part of it, and even though we were already paying the library separately as a city, being part of the library district now, I feel, allows Port Orchard a better opportunity to have better services through that district for a library in the future. I was asked to spearhead the effort with a levy lift, and I didn't feel that the timing was right to ask the citizens to put out even more money. And so I refused to do that, but I, I did feel that we have to look to improving our library. It is highly utilized, and I do think that we can make use of the library and a community resource center probably in the Prospect area downtown, which is where we would actually have room for expansion, and use that waterfront property that the city now owns to be better utilized for retail and other development. So that's something that I would move forward with and feel that the city made a good choice in becoming part of the library district, which would allow us more funds for the future of that library.
Something that I would have agreed with, I agreed with the roundabouts personally. I'm a fan of those. I think they help traffic flow, and especially if they're carefully planned to be done right the first time. If you take, for example, the ones off the Burnham exit off of 16 going into Gig Harbor, first time around, they had some difficulty with that, and there were some snarls, and I think the public was a bit confused on how to actually use it. But now that it's been redesigned and properly done, traffic moves really smoothly in and out of that area, and I don't find myself ever waiting to go anywhere. So I think that that was, I think that's what will happen when they, I mean, get done in Port Orchard. Yeah, the funding is going to be a big issue. It's an expensive project, but I think that the, the city won't have the service issues like they do with maintaining signals, like Cindy was saying. So I think that the roundabouts are a wise choice to use there. So I agree with the city on that. I also agree with all the work that they've done with annexations. I think annexations are a wonderful thing for the city with the amount of revenue they bring in with sales tax revenue and property tax revenue, and I look forward to seeing the city grow in the coming years. There are, you know, of course, things that come along with annexations as far as services that we'll need to provide with police servicing businesses and residences, and then also road work, signal work, bridge work, that type of thing that we'll pick up. But annexations, for the most part, are really good things, so I agree with what they've done there. One thing that I would probably disagree with is the decisions that were made regarding the mayor's salary. I think any increase in his salary should have been brought to a vote of the public, and I didn't agree with the council raising his salary.
I'm going to ask to clarify one thing, because you talked about roundabouts also. Do you disagree with the idea of using them, or was it, you just think the Tremont won't be done?
Right. I don't disagree with using roundabouts, and I think they're definitely part of our future. I'm talking in particular about that quarter, that particular quarter, because the roundabout started as a much smaller roundabout and had to be increased in size to the extent that it's going to intrude in that neighborhood.
And you're suggesting that the city council relook at how that project came about?
I really, I really do think so, and because what's going to have to happen now because of the issue with pedestrian crossing safety, because that whole area back in that Tremont Corridor is all residential, and there's children that go from that area to the schools on the other side, and a lot of them actually bike and walk, and there's pedestrian safety issues with the project. And also, a huge part of it was that the police and the fire departments had issues with response time, because going around a roundabout slows down response time, and that is their main artery for, for leaving the city and coming back to it. So there were, there were a lot of questions raised by the fire department and the police department about how they could get around a roundabout and how people in the roundabout would respond to them. They've had these problems before. So it's the actual corridor itself that poses a problem with that particular roundabout.
Amy, you agree with the roundabouts in general, but do you agree with that?
I disagree with what she's saying about, I met with Chief Townsend a few weeks back, and I asked him specifically what his thoughts were on the roundabouts, and he said, as long as they're designed correctly, we're not talking about a one lane in, one lane out type thing. We're talking about two lanes and, you know, citizens know to pull to the right when you see the flashing lights. And so I believe, just as anywhere, people understand what to do when they see flashing lights, and they would get out of the way.
Speaking of law enforcement, I wanted to ask you, like you both mentioned, the city's grown through annexations, and that's, you know, increased the burden on some of the agencies. Is increasing the number of police something that you'd be willing to support in the next couple of years?
Yes, I, I.
Amy.
I certainly would, yes. I think public safety comes first. I think that, you know, our citizens are really happy with the service they get from the police now. I know I am. Being in McCormick Woods, I noticed a definite change in the police presence when we were brought into the city. Waiting at the bus stop with my kids, I see the patrol car go by every morning, and I was really thankful to see that. So as the city grows through annexation, yes, I think that, that police are going to have more and more demand on them as far as, especially with businesses, you know, dealing with Walmart and Home Depot that's coming, that kind of thing. They're going to be busy, and more residential calls, they're going to need additional, additional staff.
Yes, we'll have to expand the police force, but it is something to consider because the cost of adding one police officer and all the equipment needed is huge. So we have to be very careful of how we expand, and public safety is a priority, and that is one of the reasons that I would go back to the issue with response time, which I think the fire department actually had a lot to say about that, and they were very concerned about getting the fire engines through a roundabout. And also, we have a lot of senior citizens in that area who utilize the health center on the other side. I'm not sure about you, but in near Gig Harbor, I do see a lot of people still having, being quite confused about how to use them. And part of it has to do with the feed. We have a roundabout on Bethel that feeds very well because it's only a three-way feed. This particular roundabout would have at least a four-way feed and even five with the proposed plan that they have now, which would still probably have backups going all the way to Highway 16. And it wouldn't be just one roundabout in the quarter. What's being proposed is at least two and possibly three. So that's part of the concern that the fire department did have, and they were very vocal about it, and actually had representatives come many times to the meetings during the time when this was in discussion. So I don't think the fire department is completely satisfied with the results right now, but, you know, if the council has voted and we're moving forward, they now, but, you know, if the council has voted and we're moving forward, they have to live with it.
Do you think the one on Bethel works well?
It's a three-way feed.
The roundabout?
Yes, and it doesn't have the backup problem. Well, it actually goes back into Bay Street, but when you add an extra feed, the fourth, and I'm sure you've seen, right? You've seen that even at Gig Harbor with the backup comes out onto 16. They can be efficient, and what will happen is they'll favor a direction, and sometimes during the day, you actually cannot get into it because you have the precedence of the right-of-way before.
Do you think that's the proximity to the highway that does that?
I do, I do. I think it's a problem, and I don't think we have the best solution to that. And I don't think the neighborhoods of that, the neighbors of that area are completely satisfied with that solution either, because that roundabout does come way back into the neighborhood area. You know, and that's, when you invest in a house, you wanna make sure it's nice for your, the future, and I think that's part of the concern.
Does anyone else want to ask a question? Please.
Medical marijuana. The city kinda backed off on that. It might be your condition that happens. Seems like it'd be a nice money raiser.
The regulation of it.
Do you think you should have medical marijuana placed from the city?
You mean dispensaries or community gardens?
Dispensaries.
Dispensaries.
Yeah, not a bad option.
Okay, well, the city was really in a tough spot with that, as you know. They were put, having to weigh federal law versus state law, and the council, you could tell, they were all very uncomfortable with having to come out and make a decision one way or another. My personal opinion is that I don't see anything wrong with the community gardens as long as they're regulated and the police know what they're supposed to do or not do regarding them, and the people that are using them are the right people. As far as they're the approved patients, they have the card, they've gone through the right channels to get the card and use the gardens. I don't have a problem with that. The dispensaries, I don't really feel in favor of the dispensaries, I guess, and more in favor of the gardens. That's my stand.
Why are you not in favor of the dispensaries?
Mainly just because there's not a good place where everyone is going to be happy with its location. I think in some way or another, the neighborhood would be brought down by a dispensary. I think that people would have a really hard time agreeing upon a location.
What I'd rather see is to have medical marijuana distributed through a pharmacy. That way, it would be taken care of, it would be taxed and regulated, it would be, the quality of the product would be there. Everything is in place for it to be dispensed through a pharmacy. That is what I prefer. I think part of the issue the police have with both the gardens and the dispensaries is how do you enforce anything? How, I mean, it's so nebulous, and they're caught between a state law and a federal law, and there were lots of issues that were raised about, how far do we go with this? Because we made, they swore to, an oath, to not violate any law, and here they are, being asked to do this with the whole marijuana situation. It is obvious, I think, that medical marijuana is a benefit to many people. There's a concern about people being able to get a medical card very easily and what that would mean for, you know, the whole process. But as long as it's dispensed through something like a pharmacy that already has regulations in place, I think it's the safest thing for both the user and the distributor. I would also, the garden issue is pretty huge, and what we've noted is, and Chief Townsend was explaining this at one of the last meetings, is how do you enforce 45 plants in a garden? How do you keep track of that? What happens with people coming in to steal it? How do we solve these problems? It seems that when the state was thinking about this, they didn't work out a lot of the issues. What was being proposed was having these gardens inside a building. You know, well, how do the police enforce that? Then that becomes private property. So, there's so many issues about enforcement and the cost of enforcement. Do we have to have police officers hired just to enforce these gardens or dispensaries? That would be a huge issue for the city, so it could be very costly. But we know we have to move in that direction and find solutions. The moratorium of six months, I think, was a good move on the part of the city to see what other cities do with this discrepancy between state and federal laws. I think there's so much, there's ramifications legally for many of their decisions, and they're biased to wait, to have this wait as other cities come forward with their own ideas. But regulation is a huge part of it, and I think safety is a pretty big deal. You're just saying you don't want dispensaries in your neighborhood. Well, I think that's the same thing with gardens, if there's going to be people who would steal and what they would do to get that product, which they already are doing for drugs. I don't know how we're gonna work that out, but it's gonna take some people really thinking on this. And I hope that the state will help some of the cities get through some of this as well.
I was gonna ask, your comments reminded me about legislative priorities. What would, what should the city's legislative priorities be, and do you agree with the city's having hired a lobbyist?
Go ahead, look.
What do you want us to? Yes, I did agree with the city hiring a lobbyist, but I think we need reform, government reform, that we have to do this, because I don't think we should have lobbyists. My basic stand is, we've gone too far with the whole lobbying effort and that we are buying votes. That's not how it's meant to be. But the city, in order to be in a place to receive some of these funds, right now, the way it's set up, does need this lobbyist. I think the one they've chosen is a very capable person. I've heard her speak, and I think she's doing a very good job on behalf of the city, but the reform is something that I would go after in the future, and that's on a larger level, government reform, because I don't really think we should have lobbyists. It's dealing with what we have now.
And then the legislative priorities?
The legislative priorities. Well, I think right now, to be honest with you, this whole thing with the medical marijuana is something that we have to just work on. We have to fast-track on this one. We don't really have that much time to work this out, and I think we need to actually have some people come in to help us with this, to be in a place to make wise choices about this.
My priorities would be, I know that legislators were helpful in helping us get that, the grant for the DeKalb Pier, $700,000 for that. I think that was a cooperative effort with the lobbyist and Senator Kilmer. But the priorities moving forward, I think if they could help us downtown as far as Bay Street, that's a state highway, and I think we may be able to round up some grant funding to help rejuvenate that area, whether it be with the utilities to bring them underground, make that a little bit easier, bring to the future, that would be great. So, that would be one thing that I would push for.
And your opinion on whether they should have a lobbyist?
Oh, yes. I think the lobbyist has been a good investment so far, so I think it should be something that they should evaluate yearly, and so far, it's been doing well.
We're coming close to the time that we've kind of allotted, so what I'd like to do is give you each two minutes, just as a last, if there's something we overlooked, if there's something else you'd like to add, if there's a point you'd like to turn to. One last kind of parting shot, I guess. Who did, I believe we started with Cindy, is that right?
She started.
She started, okay. And so, we'll go that same quarter, so you can...
Okay.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I think probably what I would stress is the pie in the sky and the reality of what we're dealing with, with our current budget restraints, with funding that seems to be drying up everywhere. I've written grants actually for Cedar Cove Days and for our functions, and those monies aren't there anymore. The Washington Tourism Bureau that I worked with earlier on, about four years ago, doesn't even exist. The sponsorship money, the fundings, the grants, a lot of that, of what we've relied on heavily to work on our major projects, is very limited, and we can't count on a lot of those sources like we did in the past. So, I think what we have to do is have it be a priority to work with what we actually do have and what we can count on. That would be, I do think the budget is a huge priority. I am a fiscal conservative and think we, it's a huge priority to balance our budget and not to overspend or overcommit the community's dollars. I was very concerned by the poor Birmerton and the way some of those monies were spent in the past. I feel that was, the housing projects and the debacle that took place with that kind of spending and the poor return on that investment is something that we have to be very careful about in the future. And in all of these things in our planning, to be fiscally responsible at every avenue. And that's one of the reasons I'm looking at the roundabout project, to look at that again and see how much money we still need to have in order to finish that, because that's really going into the millions right now. And I don't see us being able to land those dollars to continue or finish that project. So, I think the whole idea, I'm sorry. What it is, is being practical for right now and still having a plan for our future. The city plan, which we have never really come about yet, is something that would be high on my priority list, so that all of our efforts would move towards, like, building the new library and that kind of thing when we do have it, but have it all prioritized so that we would have the best use of the funds that we have right now.
So, again, I'm running to be a voice for families. I saw a hole in the council when I was there doing work as a parks advocate. I've made some real change in the city as far as the parks. I don't just attend meetings. I've actually moved forward with a problem that I saw in the safety of the playgrounds. I got that problem solved by working with the Moms Club. We did the safety card, we showed the council what the problem was, we offered the solution of the redesigned playground, and with the council's help, we were able to make that change happen. So, I think families are really important in the city. They're going to help businesses thrive. If they can stay, play, and pay in the city, then things will happen, and Port Orchard can continue to grow. So, I think my combination of working with small businesses through my work experience and my civic involvement make me the right candidate for the job.
Thank you. We appreciate you both coming in.